Good morning. We will call to order the Blue Earth County Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 13th. First item on our agenda, for those who are able, please rise for pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on our agenda is the Agenda Review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Well, Mr. Chair, we have one additional item to add to the agenda this morning, and that is a tobacco license request from United Fields Midwest, and so we would like to add that under Administration.
Move to approve with the addition.
Second.
Here, we've got a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is approved with the addition of the tobacco license. At this time, it would be appropriate to recess the county board meeting and call to order the Economic Development Authority meeting. And first item on that is the Agenda Review and Approval. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The Economic Development Authority Agenda is approved as printed. Our next item of business, item number three, are the minutes of June 25th. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The minutes of June 25th are approved as printed. Item number four is a feasibility report for agency's street renovation. Please come forward and identify yourself for the record. Morning.
Good morning.
Chair and members of the board, I'm Luke Peterson with the City of Mankato's Facilities Department. I am here to present the 121 Agency Street Renovation Housing Project in Eagle Lake, Minnesota. The project highlights include selective demolition, select gypsum board replacement, flooring replacement in its entirety throughout the unit, interior and exterior doors, painting the unit in its entirety, kitchen and bathroom remodel, appliance upgrades, select plumbing upgrades, and removal and replacement of the existing deck. The project is expected to take place this fall or winter. The estimated value of the project is $165,838 and will come from Blue Earth County EDA capital funds. Any questions?
Any questions, clarifying questions?
Is that unit empty right now?
Correct. Yes, it is empty.
And then do they have an ETA for it to be done, or?
It would be, we're hoping in February.
Oh, okay. That's a pretty fast turnaround.
Yep.
And how many people does that hold?
It is a three-bedroom unit, I believe.
Just one three-bedroom unit?
Yep. Yep. It's one-half of a duplex.
So we haven't touched it in a lot of years, then?
Yes. Yeah. I think 19, I believe.
All right.
There questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Have read the recommendation to accept the feasibility report, order the executive director to prepare final plans and specs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any final discussion, other discussion? We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The resolution is approved.
Thank you.
That concludes our EDA Agenda. Item number five, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This meeting is adjourned. We will call back the Blue Earth County meeting. Item number four, tab two, is our MICA update. Would ask to come forward and identify yourself. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioner and Chair Papp and Board. Matt Mossman, Executive Director of the Minnesota Inner County Association. Very happy to be with you this morning. Mr. Novak is with me. Nancy Seleski is on a much-deserved vacation this week, and so we are a lean crowd. You'll be getting a little bit of the Matt Mossman Show here this morning as I try to cover ground for Nancy with my sidekick, Mr. Novak. I'll start off. Chair Papp, I want to compliment you. I did actually, I was going to reach out, I did actually catch your testimony to Congress several weeks back on some important rural infrastructure and EMS issues, which I know are part of the conversation here at the state as well. So if we go to the first slide, actually, we'll just jump to the second slide. I will also, in the presentation, given where we're at with being several months out of session, and you may well be aware of some of these changes, we'll recap the session. And I'm also going to go off-script a little bit as we're already starting to think about 2025 and sort of some of the things that we're thinking about, and welcome any comments and feedback from you as well as in terms of what you feel like we should be thinking about on your behalf as we approach the 2025 session. And I want to thank you all and Commissioner Brundur and people for your longstanding service to the MICA Board of Directors. And we, of course, will be putting those platform legislative recommendations together before the end of the calendar year. This next slide here, again, I used to be a numbers geek, and I try to still draw on that a little bit, so I tend to start with the numbers. This is where legislative session started and ended up in terms of the state general fund budget. The legislature really started off with about $3.7 billion in mostly one-time money that was available to them if they chose to use it, and I've seen a lot of legislative sessions where they would have used all of those resources. And the end of the day, if you look to that middle column at the bottom in gray there, the legislature made about $424 million in largely one-time new budget decisions this last legislative session, and an additional $90 or so million, bringing the three-year total to $519 million there in the bottom right-hand corner. Fully 25% of that $424 million was allocated to something that was just a top priority and very important to county governments, which was to set aside $109 million for the Tyler settlement that otherwise would have fallen on the shoulders of counties. And I'll talk about that more in a little bit. But in the end of the day, as we start to think, this chart, I think, also gives a sense of, so where, it already starts to show, so where are we going to be at next session? The good news is that monthly revenue collections have been coming in over forecasts, so this is both holding and likely to, you know, we'll see what the November forecast comes out, but probably this is still a fairly solid picture of what things will look like with one-time resources up front and some structural imbalance going forward. And hopefully, that has been declining, the structural imbalance, hopefully it will continue to decline. And what I mean by that is if you look at the two cells highlighted in orange here, if you look out into the out-years of '25, '26, '27, revenues are expected to be less than ongoing spending for that biennium, under current law, all else being equal. That is the biennium where the next legislature will be setting the biennial budget, so that is the space, if you will, in which we will be having most of the conversations that we have with the legislature about how do we, as county governments, intersect with that state budget condition, both in terms of where we feel like more state support might be needed, or where we want to protect state support. To that end, so this is the part going off-script, the tax-forfeited lands solution was, we are very grateful that, for the legislative leadership that helped put that in place, but we also know that part of that package was not how do we pay for cleanup and costs that counties face as part of the tax forfeiture process that happened. So that's certainly something we want to re-engage with. There has been ongoing discussion about expanding pensions for both public employees at the state and local government level, 911 telecommunicators, public safety staffs, and others. That is increased cost pressures. There was actually, this last legislative session, an enhancement of benefits, an enhancement of the annuity multiplier for para-correctional staff, so local government correctional staff. That's an increased cost of about $4 to $5 million a year for counties collectively that was unfunded. So that cost will be something going forward that most largely counties, in this case, will have to, as employers, will have to put in higher contribution levels. So more conversation around pensions expected this next legislative session, and as we, I think, are also seeing, there's just generally levy pressure on the part of local governments and counties with compensation adjustments, this is what I've been hearing, and some other things. So those are all conversations as you look to this budget. But in the end of the day, the legislature actually left town in one of the healthiest budget conditions that I have, I think, in my 25 years or so doing this work, ever seen the legislature leave town with. $3.3 billion on the bottom line, in addition to $3.3 billion of budget reserves. Almost 10% of biennial spending left unallocated for the '24-'25 period. And of course, as we say, though, some of that carries forward to help keep the budget looking healthy in '26-'27. So with that, I'll move on to just the next two slides and talk about taxes a little bit, then turn it over to Steve. But I will, given that you've seen a lot of this be very high-level, this here slide summarizes the money part of the solution, which passed, as you can see, with unanimous support in the House and the Senate, championed and authored by Representative Dave Linsingard in the House and Senator Grant Hofchild in the Senate, became Chapter 113, $109 million. That was provided to pay retroactive settlements as a result of the U.S. Supreme Court decision that went against Minnesota's state law on tax forfeiture for non-payment of property taxes. When I'm, especially in a public hearing, I always feel it's important to point out that this is not money going to counties, this is money going to former property owners that will be facilitated through this program and through the work of the counties. Participating counties will have to do certain things as a result of that law, and those things are laid out here on this chart, and I won't go into them unless there's any questions. And then the other piece of the puzzle, if we flip, if we go to the next page, and we really, I really want to note the support and leadership of Representative Sandra Feist and Bonnie West, in the House, and Bonnie Westland, Senator Bonnie Westland in the Senate, who authored the policy changes. So Minnesota's law had to also change, in addition to the settlement funds, Minnesota's law had to change in order to respond to the Supreme Court decision and make sure that we had a constitutionally compliant law related to tax forfeiture of property for non-payment of tax. There were a number of key provisions that were included, the most, conceptually, the most significant change here is, I think, really two things. One, that there will have to be a sale, a timely offering of sale at auction of property in order to set a value. And if that value and that sale generates more than the minimum bid, or more than is owed in taxes and other costs that have accumulated to the public, then there will, there must be an application process for either the property owners or other parties of interest to get that, access to that surplus, if you will, as is defined in the law. There were, again, some additional expectations that were put in as the package was negotiated and the finishing touches were put on at the end related to setting up some additional support around housing to help keep people in their residential properties. And I just, it's important, I think, in a public meeting to call out that counties already do that. There's a three-year redemption process. Most counties do a lot of work to try and help make sure that owners have every opportunity to pay back taxes and to rectify the circumstances. And then there's also, will be opportunities to try and keep those properties in residential classification. So that's on the tax-forfeited lands piece. My next slide is just to say that there were, one of the main areas I cover at the legislature for MICA is the tax and fiscal policy area. There was a lot of other conversation at the legislature around local aids and a tax bill, both the House and Senate went into conference committee with recommendations for some one-time increases in both bodies, in SCORE, one-time increases in homeless preservation, prevention aid in the, in the House, SWCD aid in the Senate, and none of those things ended up happening. The tax bill, there was only a handful of items that the House and Senate came to consensus on in the tax area. The tax, the tax bill, as you will hear as we go along, did actually become quite large, almost 1,500 pages, as it was used for the omnibus, omnibus, sometimes referred to as the mega bill at the end of session. The piece on this page that I do, the last two bullet points, I expect to, in particular, be things, in addition, obviously, to aids, to county governments, that we always want to talk to the legislature about, but there is ongoing conversation about if and how to extend to cities and counties the opportunity to self-impose a local sales tax under certain conditions for capital projects. As you probably know, right now, if, say, a county builds a costly public safety facility and wants to try to help support that through a local sales tax in addition to property tax, the county must go to the legislature for a special law to put that sales tax in place. This conversation, and cities do the same thing for amenities. This conversation is around giving the opportunity for cities and counties to impose that local sales tax with a voter referendum at the local level, rather than to have to go to the legislature for the special authority to do so. There's a lot of conversation around how to do that and ensure and enhance equity for the sales tax base in the state. And so the two proposals that the House and Senate had were unable to come to consensus, and that continues to be a conversation. And of course, local governments pay tax on construction materials, which we feel is just a bad policy and shell game, collecting local tax to pay state tax, and we are, continue to hope to get rid of that. That costs local governments about $80 to $90 million a year in state taxes between cities and counties. I'll stop there and happy to answer questions, and of course, I will cover Nancy's area when Steve is done with transportation.
Questions?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So always good to be in Blue Earth County. Transportation this year was a little bit of an enigma. We had, I think it's fair to say that the vast majority of all of MICA's transportation issues ended up in one of four bills. House File 3436, the Omnibus Transportation Policy Bill, which did pass. House File 5242, the Transportation Finance Bill, which also passed. And then the Capital Bonding and Capital Cash Bills, which unfortunately did not pass. So let me just touch on each of the four. The Omnibus Transportation Policy Bill, House File 3436, as I said earlier, did pass with overwhelming bipartisan majorities. Part of the reason was, it had a lot of little policies in there, and not too many of which were controversial at all. The only ones that actually affected, effectively related to our transportation platform was we usually, almost always, have a platform plan to try to keep truck weights in line and not allow exceptions. We had two minor exceptions this year, and that was it, so it was a good year in that, in that category. Moving over to the Transportation Finance Bill, this is a bill that was, a lot of time was spent on it by a variety of people. As we got towards the end of the session and into conference committees, you may recall that transportation got combined with labor and housing. So that's three major issue areas in one conference committee, which, you know, leads to some interesting legislative gymnastics, let's say that. And it took a very interesting route to the finish line in the last week of the session. It had been referred to the, well, they met four nights in a row in the final week. On Wednesday, they passed it onto the floor of the House and Senate. The House dispatched with, the House dispatched with the bill, but the Senate, it was sent back in the conference committee, and it became the vehicle for the Lyft and Uber deal, which I think a lot of you probably followed a little bit in the news. And that was an interesting development, because then along with it, there were five or six other major bills that combined. So all of a sudden, as we approached the last day of the session, this was a 1,500-page bill and had multiple issues that were significant to a variety of people in there, and the question was, could they get that lifted off, off the Senate floor? Which did occur in the last few minutes. So the details of that bill, in terms of funding it, they had been given very little money as a target, $4 million, $2 million, which expanded to $4 million. But they did a number of cancellations and shuffled around a lot of things that hadn't been fulfilled. And in the end, they dispatched $117.5 million. The two, I think, appropriations of note were $15 million for corridors of commerce and $15 million for the state road construction program. On the policy side, I think there were two issues of note. One was the establishment of the Minnesota Advisory Council on Infrastructure, which was an issue that had been pushed by Representative Erin Cagle, who's someone, I think you should remember the name, looking ahead to 2025. She's a competitor for what will become, they need a new House Chair for the Transportation Committee, she's one of the people competing for that, and did a lot of work on this. It's modeled after something in Michigan, it's designed to try to save costs, it puts some rhyme or reason to bonding projects. But I'll think overwhelmingly in terms of the impact for Blue Earth County on the policy side of this, and your engineer Ryan Thill just played a big role, along with our other MICA engineers, trying to deal with the impacts of the transportation greenhouse gas emissions issue. 2023, a lot of money was put into transportation, a lot of historically sound methodologies, gas stacks, whatever, were enhanced. But along with all of that money, there were a variety of things affecting policy that were also passed, and they came with task forces that a lot of us spent a lot of time working on in the last 18 months or so. And on this transportation greenhouse gas issue, the engineers really dug in. We had two MICA engineers on the task force, they met every other week from July of 2023 to February of 2024. Ryan was very involved also, and out of that came some changes to the bill that I think are going to be helpful going forward as we try to figure out ways to preserve the projects we want to get fixed and do it in the context of these new laws that are trying to help protect the environment. So they did make a change in terms of how they define the overall requirements from a total statewide policy analysis requirement versus a project-to-project analysis, which creates a little more room for movement in terms of working things out, which I think will be very good. They also created an ongoing technical advisory committee, which will have a couple of local representatives on it. We hope that those representatives will be county engineers, as has been our recommendation. They did, as I said earlier, significant work from '23 to '24 on this overall issue. The other major thing that they did accomplish was to keep safety as a top priority for road and bridge projects, in the context of all of the new environmental provisions. That was actually quite a discussion over a period of about nine months, and the net result of that, I think, is very good. And of course, finally, this technical advisory committee now will, will stay with the law and move forward through time and have the opportunity to create solid input on future projects and to keep significant projects moving forward. So that's, there's a lot in there, and that's just a brief summary, but I think it gives you a feel for it. Then let me just shift to the two bonding bills, the capital bonding and the cash bonding bills, House File 5220 and House File 5162. Unfortunately, this was one of the big areas that they didn't get to the finish line on. Bonding bills, as you know, take 60% in both houses. They tried right up until the end. And the last kind of an offering we heard, if it had become law, would have helped us in terms of local roads and bridges, that would have totaled about $110 million for those categories, along with the local road wetland replacement program. But, you know, it didn't happen, and so it wasn't a good year for those areas that, you know, we value highly in county government. And it's frustrating, because, of course, they don't give us the power to vote, that belongs with the legislators, and they choose not to, it's hard to have a strategy for that. So that's where we ended up, along with saying that the Capital Cash Bill hung around too until the end. It was on the floor of the Senate, the clock was ticking, and about when they were going to hammer down the gavel, time ran out, so it didn't pass. And so that was, you could have made a TV movie out of that one. And I think if you were watching it, you know that chaos then developed after that on the Senate floor, which, as someone who's served in the House and the Senate, that just doesn't happen on the Senate floor, but now it has, so. That kind of takes us to the end, except to say that, looking ahead to the 2025 session, I think a big issue will be, again, an attempt to get a bonding bill done, even though they won't be on the right cycle again. That was supposed to get fixed this year. And I think another big issue, because it'll set the tone and direction for the House, we don't know who's going to win the election, but no matter who wins the election, the House Transportation Chair will be vacant, because Representative Hornstein is retiring. And so, you know, if it's the Democrats, we kind of know who the competitors are, if it's the Republicans, there'll definitely be a new Transportation Chair, but remains to be seen who it will be. So that would be my report. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions at this time?
If there are none, I'd like to just ask your indulgence for a minute or two. This, this is going to be my last report to the Blue Earth County Board. I'm going to be retiring at the end of next month, and I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, and in a lot of cases, your predecessors, who always were very nice to me, and it's always been an enjoyable, enjoyable experience to come down here. And then on a personal note, Commissioner People, one of the things this job did for me was allowing me to get reunited with some of my old legislative friends, of which Mark was one. We were on opposite parties, but we worked together on a lot of issues, especially transportation, and had a lot of good times, too. So finally, just thank you to the, to Blue Earth County. Great county, I know it'll continue to be so, and I was pleased to help you just a little bit along the way, so, thank you.
On behalf of the entire board, congratulations on your retirement, and just as important, thank you for all you have done, not only in this role, but past roles in government as well. Appreciate, appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we'll miss you, I'll definitely miss you.
Steve, over all these years, we've worked together a lot on transportation.
Yep.
Me being on the AMC board in the, in the transportation, and I really appreciated all the help that you've given, both AMC and the counties, throughout the years. And enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Health and Human Services.
Thank you. And speaking of big shoes to fill, or replace, or get new shoes, in addition to Mr. Novak, I will cover for Nancy, who you know has been covering human services. I will cover for Nancy, who you know has been covering Human Services, fantastic, doing a fantastic job for MICA for many years. I will also probably try to go a little bit fast, not only because I'm not Nancy, but we rely and are very grateful for Angie Youngerberg and your Human Services team, who we just get tremendous insight from on these issues as we go through the legislative session. And I have no doubt that anything I can say for, to you today, Angie can also answer your questions as well. But one of the big things that happened this year, after many years of conversation, the legislature passed something called the African American Family Preservation Act, also known as the Leila Jackson Law. This is a, a program that will require DHS to establish, first of all, a pilot program in Hennepin and Ramsey Counties that implements the act over a two-year period effective January 1, 2025. And then it also establishes a working group to provide guidance and oversight to the pilot programs with the intention that the program would be implemented statewide as well over time. MICA did work with, in the end, the authors to make sure that MICA, Maxx and AMC all had an appointment and were all working together in order to be participants in that conversation. There has been broad support for this in the legislature, but we also know that as we move forward in this direction, it's really important to also fund and support it appropriately and at, at the right level with state dollars in order to, to be effective. By September 1, 2026, the working group must develop an implementation plan for the law to go into effect statewide. And the effective date for the statewide program is set as January 1, 2027. Emergency Medical Services, again, Chair Pap, part of the conversation that you had with Congress is, is a big issue in rural Minnesota. The legislature had an extensive conversation at the legislature, both around the policy language, but a one-time set of resources, which I think is broadly perceived to be a temporary and Band-Aid with the need to revisit the issue in the future. So $30 million was appropriated, $24 million one-time for emergency aid to certain licensed ambulance services across the state, and then $6 million for a Sprint Medic Pilot Program in Ottertail and Grant Counties in one part of the state, and then in St. Louis County as well. And we're hoping, with the hope that there will be a lot of learning that comes out of that as to how to possibly ensure timely emergency medical services in greater Minnesota. All of which is going to take additional resources and conversation at the state as to how that system works, as well as conversations with federal government in terms of the reimbursement rates. As you may know from other issues that we've talked about, when there is no load, there is no reimbursement from the, from the federal government. And so that's a big conversation. High points in the three other bills that were passed, and again, some of this legislation was rolled into the mega omnibus bill. The high points of the Pinto and Wickland Bill, the Children and Families Bill, requires review of child facilities and, and near facilities. It requires counties to establish local child mortality review teams. DHS will also be required to provide training and support for those local review teams. There's a new Supreme Court Council on Child Protection that counties will be involved in, and DHS is to review the systems in other states and make recommendations on common entry points for reporting child maltreatment here in Minnesota. And then DHS is also required to develop a comprehensive child welfare information system. As you may recall, there was a lot of work done a number of years ago on child protection and some significant mandates that came out of the state government, and there was, has been increased attention on child protection and welfare laws and how DHS implements those policies in their work with the counties. Child and Family Appropriations, 10 million was invested in the SSIS system. Again, this links back to the green screen technology that counties still use to interface with the state agency and is an important part of this whole conver, 10 million, to be clear, is really kind of a down payment on what is needed to overhaul that system and really intersects both with the African American Family Preservation Act and just the whole child protection system and making sure that the data and the resources that are available to help support that are in place for county governments, both at the state technology level and at the county technology level. 1.125 million was also put in place for childcare improvement grants. And then I'm going to go on to the, to the next slide. There was also the Hoffman-Nur Bill. This was the, the provision. This was the omnibus bill that was amended into the mega bill, included a number of, I'll highlight a number of items. The Min Choices Changes, modifications that were made will allow counties to continue contracting for Min Choices Assessment. That was something that we wanted to have happen modified. It also modifies the timeline in which certain, in which a county must visit an individual requesting an assessment from 20 calendar days to 20 working days, which gives some additional flexibility. And extends the validity of Min Choices Assessments from 60 to 365 days. One thing that did not happen here, which is something that we continue to push for as counties have been seeking to streamline the process in situations where the reassessment that is done is for an individual whose personal, whose physical conditions have not changed, are never, are not going to change medically, but yet the assessment is still required. And then there was a lot of work done around jail health as well, directing DHS to submit a waiver application for MA demo projects to provide healthcare coordination services to bridge the community-based services for individuals in correctional facilities, particularly at the, at the time approaching release. And it also creates a reentry services working group that includes counties with a report due, that, that task force was effective July 1, 2024. And then establishes a pilot program to provide payment to counties to support correctional facilities administering long-acting injectable antipsychotic medication for mental health treatment. I'm going to go off script here and, and just quickly, because we don't have corrections specifically in public safety on the list, that that is also an area we'll be looking for next year. There's a, a study that was put in place two years ago on that the Department of Corrections is supposed to report back to the legislature on recommendations for perhaps the requirement of regionalization of jails rather than each county having a jail. That is due at the end of this calendar year. That coupled with the expected, intended phase-out fees in the probation services area, and additionally, the legislature, there has been interest among a number of legislators for phasing out and eliminating charges for both at the state correctional level, which is happening, as well as at county jails for communication, communications and making those communications free, which also has impacts on counties. Those are all things we'll be watching that sort of relate to the work of county jails. A big part, also moving back to the bill, was the Priority Admissions and Civil Commitment Task Force. This is perhaps one of the most significant areas that we're, I'm not actually going to dive into here, but we're going to continue working on. There was a task force that has been meeting since the end of 2023 that's going to continue to meet to seek remedies in the 48-hour rule. They did bring forward recommendations, most of which include significant resources that the legislature was not willing to put in. Counties have been, MICA has been represented in this work, and there is going to be a continued priority, I expect, from our organization and others on mental health and funding for mental health services in this next legislative session. What did get done is there was an establishment of a mentally ill and dangerous civil commitment reform task force related to these issues as well, and there's three county appointments on there. And then that, as I said, the, the other task force is going to continue. And then, did I, I might have missed parts of the Wickland Lebling Bill, or that's next. There is, was a, a change in the telecommunications fee set at 12 cents. That's to fund the 988 Suicide Prevention and Crisis Center. There was a longtime priority for counties around behavioral health. There's an establishment of an MA benefit, has been the establishment of an MA benefit for children's mental health and crisis stabilization. What the legislation does do is directs the DHS to consult with counties and providers and advocates and, and to report findings to the legislature by October 1, 2025 around the potential for MA coverage there. I will pause there and ask if there's any questions. And in the interest of time, I also want to flip the, though, to the next slide, because I think it touches on a number of areas, maybe, there we go, environment and general government. Without, again, going in too detail, we have invested over the last couple of years more MICA resource into some of these areas that have become a, a high priority, are a high priority for our members, and oftentimes in partnership with other organizations, particularly around solid waste. There was a significant piece of legislation passed in the solid waste area this last year that will put in place a producer responsibility or pro-organization for packaging and waste reduction that will engage the producers of packaging waste, which is about 40% of the waste stream, to contribute to the costs of recovering recycling and, and making, and disposing of that, which will include helping to provide resources to providers like counties who engage in that work and to alleviate some of the costs that you may well now put on property taxpayers or otherwise pay through fees. And then just jumping down, as a rural county in particular, and our membership, we're a county in greater Minnesota, we did, did have a subgroup of MICA commissioners that did a lot of work around the nitrates in groundwater conversation that came up at the legislature, particularly around your fellow counties to the east in southeast Minnesota and the Karst region. And there were significant resources that were put in to, one-time largely in nature, both into education, testing, monitoring, but as well as mitigation efforts for private homes that were, that are impacted by nitrates in groundwater. I think it's pretty clear that this is the beginning, that last session was the beginning, not the end of the conversation. There also was an extension of the nitrogen fertilizer fee. We were part of that conversation in terms of trying to make sure that it remained focused on the uses that it was originally put in place for. Some of the allowable uses were expanded a little bit, but largely that fee was extended for its current uses. But we know that there's going to continue to be a conversation there, as is there going to continue to be a conversation, like I said, around pensions and some general government issues. And I'm happy to answer questions on some things that, that did happen, to clean up and make some adjustments in earned sick and sick pay leave and election laws and funding, if you have questions. But I'm going to pause there, because that's a lot. Our last slide is to say that the other change that we really kind of liked that the legislature made last session was to set the start date for the next legislative session as the second Tuesday following the first Monday in January, which in 2025 just happens to be the latest possible start that the legislature can now start, which is January 14th of 2025. And as we, as Steve kind of alluded to, particularly here in Minnesota with your hometown governor now on a presidential ticket, there is a lot to, for us to learn in November that will impact the, how the 2025 legislative session.
25 change order for township pro 356 repairs is approved.
Thank you.
The next item, number six, tab number five, is courthouse security grant. Sheriff Forso, please.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners.
How are you? During the '24 legislative session, the legislature funded for the third time funds for the Safe and Secure Courthouse Initiative Grant Program. Counties that are awarded the grant to improve the safety and security of their courtrooms will be required to provide a 50% match. Currently, we do not have any type of safety barrier between the county employees and the public and state employees in the courtroom. All the other divisions in the Justice Center have some type of barrier to protect our workers and state workers from any potential threat. So we are proposing, and we got bids to construct a, a wall, which will have glass in it to, to kind of trying to keep the open appearance, to block off the hallway into the courtrooms, which would be staffed by an iron bailiff and a metal detector. So everyone that entered the court hallway would have to be screened. I did not want to put it in the, down in the foyer of the Justice Center, because I don't think people coming in for a burn permit or any other reason should have to be screened and have their bags searched. But if you enter a courtroom, I think that's appropriate. We are one of very few courthouses in the state that do not have something to screen people going into a courtroom. The bid came in around $90,000. Again, that could change. But we do need county board support to go ahead and apply for the grant, which is due in a couple of weeks. And any county portion that would, the half cost would come out from the 2026 levy dollars. The initiative is supported by the county attorney, community corrections director, fifth district judges, court administration, and public defender's office, and I recommend that we get support to move forward with the grant application.
I'll move it.
Got a motion, a second discussion?
I don't have a discussion, Mr. Chair, but I just think this would be a huge asset to the Justice Center, and I really appreciate you keeping it out of the main foyer.
Yeah.
Because that, that just, just makes things more complicated for people.
It makes more complicated for me, too, for staff.
And I certainly, I certainly support this up on the second floor in that area. So thank you for that.
I too, supportive. Bob, how does this affect or work in our budget cycle or budget process?
Well, this would be establishing a precedent a little bit in terms of committing funds in 2026 for which you have not passed a budget, but we just have to plan for that as a part of that budgeting cycle next summer.
So they find a place to take it from the next year's budget?
Commissioner, or, sorry, Chairman, the, the plans that we are thinking is that we could get started in late '25 with the grant award and then use the levy dollars in '26 when it's finished, is, is what we're thinking, so.
All right. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. This courthouse security grant is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Next on our agenda is agenda item number seven, tab number six, Public Works. Mr. Tilges.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
Couple of action items today, where we get into some of our discussion and informational update topics. The first action item for consideration is a Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Shore Fishing Cooperative Agreement and Supporting Resolution. This is for the Lone Pine area, which is the Buckmasters Bridge at Madison Lake off County State Highway 44. Within the agreement outlines terms where the DNR would pay for repairs to the public fishing infrastructure that we have out there. It's, it's just, you know, old and in need of some repairs, and there's been a pretty large state initiative for publicly accessible fishing, so they're, they're very interested in this. So the agreement is included in the board packet for consideration. I would recommend approval of the agreement and the attached resolution, just for the board's information, or for more so Bob and Kevin. The resolution will come through for approval first. I'll send the document to the DNR. They'll send it back with their signatures, and then it'll be copied, so there'll be two rounds of docket sign versus one, just so you're aware of that. But with that, I would recommend approval of the agreement.
I have no due approval.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The resolution authorizing Blue Earth County to enter into the agreement with Minnesota DNR is approved.
All right. Thank you for that. Second action item for consideration today is an agreement for construction across County State Highway 20 in the city of Lake Crystal. Typically speaking, we require utility installations to be put in via directional drilling or jacking and augering to not disrupt traffic. However, in this circumstance, where the city of Lake Crystal has a fairly large infrastructure expansion need, the cost to do so is fairly astronomical. expansion need, the cost to do so is fairly astronomical. And when we kind of looked at the traffic volumes on the road, the, the other issue is that we have with these is the reason we require the augering or boring is because many times the, there's not a surety that if the road settles, we're, we're going to get stuck with having to fix it. In this circumstance where we have a city partner that we trust, I'm more comfortable allowing them to open cut the road, install these large utilities so that they can have better grade control and replacing it. And then, as part of the agreement, they did also agree to a warranty period for the repairs, which is included. So it'll include five years after the, they have a two-year warranty with their contractor, and then the city will warranty it for an additional five years after the fact if we do incur settlement or other issues. This will result in a, in a detour for fourteen consecutive calendar days, and then we do have a term in there of a five hundred dollar penalty per day beyond the fourteen days. They will be responsible for installation of the detour. Again, not something that we commonly do, so wanted to bring this in front of the board for your information and request your approval of this agreement for County State Highway twenty, just on the north side of Lake Crystal.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation, what is your wishes?
I'll move approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second, discussion? I guess I appreciate the county's flexibility and understanding of economic savings on this as well, so if we find partner, I believe. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passed. Construction agreement for County Highway number twenty is approved.
All right, with that, we'll move into information items. As always, please feel free to jump in as we go and ask me questions as we work through these projects and issues. County State Highway thirteen, Mathewitz should be completing the drainage work for centerline crossings this week. They'll begin the tile and underdrain and gravel base work later on in the week, and they're also beginning to place topsoil on the east end of the project, so starting to see that starting to come back together, which is a good sign. Cassa eleven from the west county line to Cassa six, R and E has completed the underground work. They're working on the drainage, or they completed the drainage work and centerline crossings, and they're working on the tile underdrain and gravel base work is beginning this week. So kind of similar stages with respect to those projects. Victory Drive, which is our County State Highway eighty-two from south of Hoffman Road to just south of Main Street. The curb and gutter for the project has been completed, or at least the supermajority of it. Dirt Merchant Incorporated is working on the trail and finish work outside of the curb line. The reason for that is because the concrete subcontractor, Miniopa Concrete, had another project that unfortunately they had to leave the site for and go do. So the decision was made to do the curb first instead of the pavement so that DMI could continue working outside of the pavement with respect to placing boulevard, top soils, you know, and getting the trails constructed, and then also being able to put the signals and lighting in. The project as a whole has experienced much more rain delay than we would typically anticipate. We knew when we laid out the project timeline to try to shoehorn it into the, the summer without impacting the school schedules was already going to be challenging. We had a project completion date of August twenty-third. Obviously, we've had an abnormal number of rain days that have impacted the project at about the worst possible time while they had the subgrade opened up, digging in the utilities and other measures. So that slows things down even worse than if, if you have the project up and you have some of the drainage infrastructure in and gravel base, you know, it'll shed the water and you could continue working much faster. With that being said, the project at this point in time is approximately two weeks behind schedule. And the bad news on top of that is if you look at this week's weather forecast.
More rain.
It doesn't help us. So right now, you know, we, we anticipate this is going to conflict with school resuming, primarily impacting Mankato East, obviously being just right down the road, Hoffman Road. We are reaching out to the busing, the school and the busing companies ahead of time trying to get, get, make sure that they're aware of this. We hope it's a short-term impact and that we can minimize it. We did have discussions during the weekly construction meeting last week that I attended about taking into consideration if there are ways to try to get the intersection open maybe before the rest of the road. But honestly, it's, it's not a big enough project where that becomes really feasible versus just getting the project open globally. So it's highly dependent on the, the concrete contractor getting in and finishing the paving work. So frustrating, but to an extent, I, you know, again, with the rain delays we have experienced, we are going to have to work with the contractor on that and, and work within the confines of our contract of how many days are permissible and what kind of extension is required due to the rain that they received. Ten and seventy-two in Vernon Center is moving along quite well. I believe the only remaining piece to do is a segment of Cassa ten east of one sixty-nine. That's, remains under construction. I believe the contractor is putting that segment of road back together now, so that project has gone fairly well. I don't know, I haven't heard a tremendous amount of comments regarding having thirteen and ten. We, we were concerned about impacts to the region. I'm sure it has been impactful, but unfortunately haven't heard a tremendous amount of complaints issued about that. I could be wrong, maybe the commissioner. Maybe you've heard a couple, so I shouldn't have said that.
Number one question is will they be done by fall harvest?
Yes, yes.
By far the biggest concern.
Yes, with the elevator right there, they are tracking to certainly be done by then. Twenty twenty-four Batuminas overlay contract, Minnesota paving materials paved, County State Highways fifty-five and fifty-six in Eagle Lake, along with doing some curb and gutter and sidewalk pedestrian ramp repairs. Shouldering will take place later this week. Cassa nine, the Lake Crystal was completed earlier this summer with similar scope of work. They still have to do three sixteen twenty-eight, thirty-eight eighty-six, County Road one twenty and County Road one eighty-three at a later date to be determined. We gave them a bigger window this year in hopes of knowing that the, none of the paving schedules are critical, with the exception of, of the cities, and wanting to get the best pricing possible. The Cassa twenty-nine bridge replacement project has been approved by Mendot, and we're going to be opening bids on that tomorrow. We're anticipating that'll probably be twenty twenty-five construction, given what time of year we're in. One forty-six bridge replacement, the bridge was closed on July fifteenth. Everstrong Construction will be pouring the bridge abutments later this week, and we're utilizing additional construction inspection and observation from Erickson Engineering because our staff is spread pretty thin. So we've got a, if you go out to that project and see an unfamiliar face, it's a consultant bridge inspector helping us out. County Road one thirty-nine bridge replacement, we were awarded five hundred thirty thousand of local bridge replacement funds to go along with about two hundred thousand dollars of local money for seven, almost seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar total project cost. No bid date has been set. We anticipate bidding this fall of twenty twenty-five. County State Highway five from Riverfront to Summit, county staff and Bolton Mink conducted preliminary meetings with representatives from ADM and Hubbard Feed to discuss access during construction. As you can imagine, they've got a tremendous amount of heavy semi and truck traffic coming in and out of those sites that we worked with them on, just a better understanding their, their need of ingress and egress and at which access points and which access points can need to stay permanent. And I think we've got good direction. We had very good meetings with them, so I appreciate their working with us in that, in that manner ahead of time. Preliminary project design is progressing well. County State Highways fifteen and twenty-eight in the city of St. Clair, the topographical survey should be completed this week. Drafting of base conditions will be completed over the next few weeks. Right-of-way will be investigated and added to the survey drawing this month, so they're, they're getting going on the project. Again, if you recall, we're having, Bolton and Mink is the consultant city engineer who's working on that project on behalf of the county and the city. Cassa ten from the west county line to Cassa twenty, project plans are at ninety-five percent. Right-of-way acquisition meetings will begin very soon. Bridge plans are nearing final approvals. I was told there's still approximately eighteen million dollars of local bridge replacement funding that we're hopeful to receive a significant sum to pay for fifty percent of the bridge replacement cost on that project, which is scheduled for next year. Cassa forty, slow prepared, no real updates. We're going to be shifting gears back to that after we get done with the ten plans and getting the environment. Cassa ten from Vernon Center to one mile east, including the bridge replacement. Widseth is the firm we're working with on that one. They've evaluated four different potential alignment alternatives, two fifty-five mile per hour alignment alternatives, which required drastic realignment of the road, and then a forty-five and fifty mile per hour alignment alternatives, which would follow much more closely to the existing alignment. Their recommendation was to utilize either the forty-five or the fifty. We did check crash data and determined we still don't have a crash problems associated with the curves. We think primarily because you're going in and out of a very, very curvy road to start with, but you're also transitioning to town where it's a thirty mile per hour speed limit. So I think we're comfortable with the utilizing a forty-five, fifty mile per hour alternatives. Typically speaking, when we want to realign roads and go to the fifty-five mile per hour design standard whenever we can, we want to do that in a circumstance where it's going to have dramatic impacts to agricultural fields or environmentally sensitive bluff areas, things of that nature. We want to take a very good, close look and make sure it's truly warranted. So in this case, we think we are relatively safe with kind of staying out of those areas and going with a little bit lower design speed. County State Highway fourteen, box culvert replacement, bridge replacement. We're approved one hundred forty thousand dollars of local bridge money to go along with about two hundred and sixty thousand of other funds for about a four hundred thousand dollar total project. Again, that'll be a twenty twenty-five project. Cassa twenty-six box culvert replacement, we're wrapping up final plans with Mendot, hopefully getting those approved and then getting funding for that one as well, likely again in twenty-five. And then the one fifty-six bridge replacement, we were awarded five hundred ninety-three thousand of local bridge replacement program funds to go along with about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of our, either local or state dollars for another seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar total project cost. That's another one. We don't have a bid date yet. We're anticipate bidding that this fall for twenty twenty-five construction. So twenty twenty-five is going to be a big year for, for bridges. Again, we're, we're seeing a lot of that comes out of the fact that we got that local road improvement program grant for Victory Drive, which freed up funding so that we could get a lot of local bridges delivered. Our maintenance crews are seal coating this week. Work should wrap up the following week. We'll fog seal the high-traffic volume roads at a later date after the seal coating is completed. Crews are still mowing out the southern third of the county. We did receive the new excavator last week, as well as a new tractor backhoe. The crews are working on repairing storm-damaged roads. Remaining repair work is primarily trails and park repairs. Dura-patching work is taking place, filling potholes around the county, and they're working on various tile intake repairs that were either maintenance-related or storm damage-related. The Monarch Butterfly Conservancy Agreement update, a letter has been sent to the landowners. A copy was sent to the county board as well, along numerous county roads, advising them that their segment of road is being considered for adoption into the conservancy agreement program application. An open house is going to be held Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, from four to six p.m. at the Public Works Department for interested people to attend and express any concerns that they may have. Again, the primary restriction on this, as it was laid out in the letter, is that it will restrict the ability to mow the ditches. It won't completely restrict the ability to mow them, but it'll leave a very short window in July, and then I believe it, it has to wait until after October. So we can still mow out the right-of-way, but again, if there are landowners that, if we get a high percentage that are haying the roads, we'll maybe want to reconsider those segments. So we're, we're doing more segments for consideration than we need, being, understanding that there's a high likelihood that we'll find segments where people are doing that and it's not going to be a good candidate, so. Once the meeting is over and we complete the application, we'll bring the final application to the board for approval prior to submittal. With respect to the twenty twenty-four flood damages, the County State Highway nine bridge update, a memorandum was provided in the board's packet regarding the dam and bridge updates. I'm keeping the two separated so that it just tracks perhaps a little bit better for the board. On the nine bridge, over the past weeks, we've been working with Ron Benson at Stone Brook Engineering to provide final structural assessment and recommendation for the bridge. This was completed on August ninth, twenty twenty-four. A copy was emailed to the county board for their information. It's a very technical report. On August second, the Mendot State Aid Disaster Committee convened and reviewed the Cassa nine bridge. Over the course of the day, the committee consisted of two county engineers, one Mendot State Aid Engineer and one Mendot staffer, if, which it actually was recommended for approval. I just received that today. The disaster count can be used by the county to float project construction costs until federal reimbursement is received. So instead of having to use our, our reserves, we could actually draw out of this fund, use it to pay the construction balance or the project cost balance, and then pay it back when we receive federal funds. I will, I'll share some additional information out of that at my next update. With respect to the Rapid End Dam, August first, twenty twenty-four, going somewhat chronologically, we held our weekly call with BAR Engineering and discussed the following items. The fact that we had Mathewitz Construction provide aerial survey of the river basin via drone the week of July twenty-second to twenty-six. We also are working on completing upstream channel surveys this past week with the assistance of the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So between that, the drone and the channel surveys will at least have a, a start to determine how much material was lost in the flood event. The county plans to complete a more detailed aerial survey where we'll actually fly it with a plane with better telemetry equipment, but that has to wait until this fall, until the foliage is off the trees if we really want to get the best product. BAR is working on providing final detail to their work scope, including hypothetical dam repairs for FEMA funding, so developing a scope of work. And again, we'll be talking with FEMA about that, or HSEM about FEMA later today, so I won't go too far down the trail on that one. They'll be working, and I, I received a draft memorandum, to provide an update to the twenty twenty-one removal feasibility study, so kind of toeing into what's changed since then. And then it'll include an estimate to fully update that study. We're working on just some iterations of that, and I had several comments on it that I shared back with BAR, so before I share that memorandum, I wanted to make sure we, we, the staff are comfortable with some of the things in there and work with BAR on it. Developing a range of alternatives and an approach to make interim repairs to the channel in the west abutment while we kind of determine what our final repair solution is. They're also going to be developing a scope of work for an architectural historian request for proposals. We'll talk about that in my CRU notes below. BAR will initiate conversations with the DNR about interim river stabilization measures. So that started, we're looking, I think, to get a meeting set up with representatives of the DNR. We discussed geotechnical engineering components of the dam and the need for additional soil borings, which could be a month or two before we are able to attain them. The other issue may be access for the borings downstream of the dam, getting the equipment in there. A FERC update report is due August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. I'll be working on that this week and submitting that by the deadline. On August fifth, twenty twenty-four, I spoke with Katie Schering from the Mendot Cultural Resources Unit and discussed the following items. The dam is currently not listed in the National Register of Historic Places. If the county decides to remove the dam using state or local funds, there would be no Minnesota Historic Sites Act review. Other consultant review for archaeological or burial sites would still be required. If the county decides to remove the dam using federal funding, the federal funding agency providing the funding must conduct a section one oh six review, and if a USDOT agency, a section four F review is also required. Section one oh six is a procedural law, and there's additional detail in there talking about section one oh six, but effectively unders, evaluating the undertaking on potentially historic properties, and as well as discussion of four F requires avoidance of use of historic properties. This was a very succinct summary of a law, a long conversation about this. So I'm working, the dam has a staff-eligible finding from the shippo through their undocumented thoughts, is, is how she described that, and it came from a nineteen ninety-nine letter that was in a file that we have. There have been obviously some structural changes to the dam since the time of that eligibility recommendation, which could likely alter the historic integrity enough that the dam is no longer eligible under the, a couple of the criteria that they evaluate and consider. The county's cleanest path for recommendation forward is to have a formal recommendation of eligibility prepared by a qualified architectural historian or historian. If the historian comes back and recommends the dam is not eligible and the state historic preservation office agrees, there is no further section one oh six or section four F process to follow if removal is determined. If the dam is recommended eligible and the state historic preservation office agrees, then under section one oh six, the county would need to show that avoidance and minimization aren't possible, and then mitigate through historical documentation and interpretive centers, things of that nature. The county can use any architectural historian or historian. We'd like to do the evaluation. It's best to follow Mendot guidelines if you're not, they have a pre-qualified consultant list, so their recommendation was to choose somebody off of that list because those people have a proven track record and have already been vetted. On August seventh, we attend On August 7th, we attended the HSEM. Well, maybe before I move on from that, we are having BAR develop a RFP for that, and they'll be sending it out to a list of consultants that do that work. My recommendation is that we proceed with this because if nothing else will incur this cost, it may or may not be reimbursable. So we'll see how much that cost is and we can make that decision. But I think there's a tremendous value to having this determination done on the front end versus having to wait for FEMA or another federal agency to go through this process. It's going to save us, I think, considerable time on the back end. So if the board's comfortable with that, I'll, I'll share an update when we receive those proposals. But we at least wanted to know what the proposed cost was and try to save that time while we're trying to get some of these things moving in parallel. On August 7th, we attended a HSEM disaster meeting held by Blue Earth County Emergency Management. The meeting proceeds pending FEMA meetings. On August 8th, we held our weekly call with BAR and discussed the following. Geotechnical staff will be on site tomorrow to discuss slope stabilization and evaluate the site dam stability analysis. Calculations are progressing. BAR should have a draft, again, of the removal feasibility report, of the update. Again, I received that draft, but it's not ready for distribution yet. Time may become critical for interim west bank slope stabilization in determining FEMA funding eligibility, the construction season, and obtaining landowner permissions for work. The draft work plan comments, so they provided us basically a document with their draft work plan. We gave them comments back, and we'll be seeing that. So things are moving. It's just, again, we're kind of sending them almost in three different directions at the same time with everything that's happening out there. So with that, that concludes my update on the dam. Again, we'll have Homeland Security Emergency Management here to speak with the dam, or the board during the work session. Any questions I can answer?
Questions?
Lot going on.
Lot going on, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, look. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, agenda item number eight, tab number seven is the county attorney report.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them or at least try. But you've got a pretty full plate today, so I'll just dispense with anything else.
Okay, we've got the monthly report included in our packet. We appreciate that. Agenda item number nine is administration. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for July 30th.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The July 30th minutes are approved.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'd move the bills.
Second.
Bills have been moved in second. Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Bills are approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 10 in your packet. It is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items, so correction there at the top again. We have promotion of a deputy sheriff to lieutenant. And so we have a follow-along of changing the employment status of a temporary deputy sheriff to a permanent or full-time deputy sheriff. And so we will be promoting or employing a temporary deputy sheriff. The temporary is a grant-funded position, so that's been a lead-in to some of those more permanent deputy positions. Then we did fill a 911 telecommunicator position. We also had an increase in hours of a part-time correctional officer to a full-time correctional officer. And then we've initiated recruitment to refill that part-time position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those informational items.
Questions?
Sir.
All right, item number 11 in your packet is just one change to the committee's list on the second page. The statewide Community Health Services Advisory Committee were asking the board to appoint Kelly Hader and Erica Sletton as the alternate to the Shack Committee. Previously, Commissioner O'Connor had sat on that committee, but the technical nature of that work suggests that having those public health professionals appointed makes sense.
Move the approve.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried.
Item number 12 in your packet then is the financial status report for July 31st. You'll see that total revenue sit at just under $70 million with expenses just under $69 million. A couple items that I draw your attention to. Again, is the transportation sales tax towards the top. That revenue is 12% lower than this time last year. Little bit below our budget, so that's a little bit of a surprise and hard to fully guess at what's causing that, but could be a slight indicator of some economic downturns. Fortunately, the next line down is the interest on our investments with the change in interest rates. We are quite a bit ahead of last year's earnings as well as our budget. So we are seeing a healthy return again on our investments. On the expense side, personal services, our salary and benefits are up from last year as a result to some of the market adjustment investments that the county board approved. And so we are seeing that impact. Our contracts and fees line is catching up in terms of our budget as the summer construction season continues. On the enterprise fund or the Ponderosa landfill, you'll see revenue at 2.9 million against expenses of 3.6. It would draw your attention to the machinery and equipment line where we have made investments of $1.7 million in equipment at the landfill, which are on a replacement schedule. And so those are planned investments or investments approved by the board. And so we'll anticipate making up some of that deficit in the final months of the year. The second page then has our cash and investment balances. Towards the top, you'll see our total available funds sit at $84.4 million against our target of $62.5. So we're running a little ahead of target there. And then further down towards the bottom, our total county fund sits at $142.4 million. So we continue to remain in a solid financial position. With that, I would answer any questions the board might have on the financial status report.
Questions on financials?
I don't have any.
All right, and then the last item is the tobacco license. We did receive an application from United Fuels Midwest. Doing business as LaHillier Quickmart. These are new owners. They're closing next week, I believe, on that purchase. And so they have requested a license to sell tobacco effective August 21st through December 31st. Normally, I probably wouldn't bring in through this mechanism of walking it in, but the applicant did attempt to submit the application on our online system a couple of times before the deadline. Had some technical difficulties on their end, as I understand it. And so we were notified after the packet went out that that application did not make it to us. And so because of their closing date and wanting to support this transfer of ownership, felt should bring it forward for the board's consideration.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. I'll certainly approve too, but also appreciate deadlines are deadlines in normal situations. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The tobacco license is approved. Anything else, Mr. President?
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay, item number 10 on the agenda is Commissioners' reports on committees. Commissioner People, would you like to start us off?
July 30th, we had a work session in a joint ditch 64 and 36, 24 and 36. And August 6th, I did some number of night-to-night in my area. And then August 7th, we did have a department head meeting. That really concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
It's been a quiet summer. I too was at the work session on July 30th. August 7th, I attended the United Way Women with Heart luncheon. And on the 8th, I went to the St. Peter Treatment Center and for the community liaison meeting and a tour, which was extremely interesting. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
All right, I also attended the work session on the 31st. I had a Blue Earth, Neckler County Safe Roads meeting. August 1st, I had a regional towards to zero death meeting. On Monday, the-